Tonight, Dr. Jeffrey Donovan of the Forest Service. He's an economist. I've gotten to see his presentation twice now, and I'm fascinated each time. So I'm sure everyone will enjoy this, and we've got lots to learn. Are we all here now? Okay.
Yes, we have. Thank you, Mayor. We have one PARB member, Parks and Rec Board member, who couldn't attend tonight. So we have the other three.
And one council member who is not here.
And one council member.
All right, good. So can we dim the lights?
Oh.
And Dr. Donovan has offered to take questions as we go along, because it's a relatively small group. So feel free to just ask questions as we go.
Yeah, definitely. This is informal, a small group. You know, I don't think you want to listen to me drone on for two hours. There might be actually some sort of Eighth Amendment issues there with unusual punishment. So we definitely don't want to do that. So if you do have comments or questions, please don't hesitate to stop me. I'd actually welcome that. So I say I'm an economist, right? So I'm a soulless economist. I'm an empirical guy. So I just love to count things. That's what I live for. So I try and quantify things. And this evening, what I'm going to do is I'm going to talk about my work quantifying urban tree benefits. And I try and do, I do try and do three things around quantifying the benefits. One is to just try and identify benefits that people aren't aware of. For example, I've been working quite a lot with public health benefits recently, and a lot of people.
Give you a little more mic.
Yeah.
A little quiet.
Okay. All righty then.
Do you feel like you're at the UN?
Simultaneously translating into Korean or something. But so, right, just to identify some benefits that people aren't aware of, so public health benefits, for example. A lot of people wouldn't think in terms of urban trees as part of our public health infrastructure, for example. I do. The other is to just come up with a magnitude, because, you know, it may be that you affect health, but the effect could be so trivial that it doesn't matter. We have sometimes in economics, we talk about something being statistically significant and economically irrelevant, you know, because it's not big enough to care about. And then the final thing, which you might not think about, is the distribution of benefits. Who benefits? Who pays and who benefits? Now, why is that important? And why is this important particularly to you guys, elected officials? Why are these three things specifically important to you? Well, I think understanding what the benefits are and how big they are, that's fairly obvious. You guys can't take into account things you don't know about. I mean, you're not, you simply need to have that information. If that's going to be part of your decision-making process, you need to know about that. So that's fine. But why is it important? You know, it's not, I hope as well that what I'm going to give you isn't just sort of interesting in an abstract sense. You know, it might be entertaining, kind of like watching a National Geographic special on star-nosed moles or something, you know? Fascinating, a little weird, but not really going to change how you live your life on a day-to-day basis. Although, if you've never seen, they are weird little guys, so I would definitely, if you get the opportunity, check them out. But hopefully, what I'm going to tell you is a little bit more relevant to how you guys do your job than star-nosed moles. But what about the scope? Well, that's important as well. Because, well, let's see. The best way to explain is I'm going to, I'm going to use a somewhat abstract example. So imagine this is you, right? This little person there is you. And imagine that, this is for a lot of people, not a difficult thing to imagine, imagine that you like beer. Right, there you are. You'll be a lover, not too difficult, it makes you happy. And then, as I am a quantitative guy, let's imagine that you value a beer at $2 apiece. Okay? So you're willing to pay $2 for a beer. Very simple stuff. So this is you, and imagine your joy when you go to the supermarket and you find that your favorite beer is on sale. It's $9 for six-pack. You value it $12. It's available for $9. Everybody's happy, right? So you think this is fantastic. You buy the beer, and then you rush home, you're all happy, and you're on your front doorstep, fumbling with your keys. You can already taste that first, you know, sort of cold hoppy goodness. It's going to be a wonderful evening. And sadly, your neighbors turn up at this point. So you've got your neighbors there. And, well, I can probably see the tragedy that's about to unfold here. And that your neighbors sadly also like beer. And that's just for the, to keep it simple, say they value it $2 apiece too, and they think, well, we may be willing to pay $2 apiece, but why not just take two of yours? That's just fine, I'll do that. And that's just fine. And no, you're not obviously very delighted by this, given that you thought you were getting six, and now you get two. And indeed, if you knew this was coming, you wouldn't have bought the beer at all, right? Because this is ridiculous, I'm not going to fund my neighbors. So then you wouldn't buy it, and then everybody's unhappy. Now, the trite example is, the key thing to see here is that among the three neighbors here, the total value you place in there is 12 bucks. It's available for nine bucks, but the purchase doesn't happen. Why is that? Because you've got concentrated costs. One person's bearing the costs, and then the other people are getting the benefits. So something, a transaction that would benefit this group isn't happening. So you get the sort of, you know, tragic loss of beer benefits. So how could you go about fixing this? Well, with a small group like this, it would be pretty straightforward. You know, you could just say, well, get your neighbors to pay you three bucks, you know, you go off to the store, buy the beer, and then you can distribute it. Right, okay, everybody's happy, everybody gets, pays $3 and gets two beers each, so they're worth four bucks. So they're happy then. So this sort of beer parable is really the situation you get with urban trees. This is where you have the problem, and this is why, where you guys can come in, you know, I think it'll become more apparent in a second, where you have this idea where you have concentrated costs and diffuse benefits. You have a problem. Because the typical things we have in life, I mean, for example, you're eating that slice of pizza there. Does your neighbors benefit in any way from that? No, they don't. But if you were to plant a tree in your yard, that's quite a different matter. They could benefit in some way from that, and indeed, I'm going to talk about that. But that's all very good, that's all very touching. So let's, let's talk about an actual study here. So the first urban tree study I did, I looked at the impact of trees on house price. And this is looking at how the natural environment affects house prices, one of the popular ways that natural resource economists value things. So at its simplest, one could imagine if you had two houses which were identical, one had a tree in front and one didn't, the house with the tree in front sells for $5,000 more, the tree's worth $5,000. That's its contribution to the price. Fairly simple. But of course, you never have two houses that are the same, except one has a tree in front. So what you do is you resort to statistical techniques where you can analyze thousands of sales, and you can isolate the impact of trees. So you value it, see what's that premium that people are willing to pay. It's the same way that you would work out how much is an extra bathroom worth, or a garage, or something like that. So it's called the hedonic method. So this was the first study I did. This was sort of, as you'll see, as we go along, I kind of wander off into inappropriate behavior for an economist. At the moment, I was, this was pretty safe, you know? House price, this is good, market value, everything was fine. I was still acting appropriately, but that sadly didn't last. So what I did here is, I did this study in the east side of Portland, so just sort of, you see Milwaukee in the south there. And this is 3,479 single-family homes that sold between July 2006 and April 2007, so the, at the peak of the previous housing boom. And my poor student, I sent around to every single one of those houses. And we wanted to, I didn't know what attributes of a tree mattered. One wouldn't think that all trees were equally valuable. Tall trees were valuable than short trees, different species may be valuable. So we wanted to take measurements, and you clearly can't go wandering around in three-and-a-half-thousand people's yards, so we restricted ourselves to just street trees. And we, I sent Elizabeth, who was wonderful, around to all these houses, took about five months, and she measured the diameter, the height, crown area, the species, the health of these trees. And now, clearly, trees are not the only thing that impact house value. There's all sorts of other things. So we took into account the attributes of a house, its size, the number of bathrooms, whether it had a garage, things like that, but also attributes of a neighborhood, the school district it was in, how far it is to downtown. So things like that. And then, when I talk about some of the health stuff, I'll talk in a little more detail about what does it mean when we say control for things? So sometimes I think people don't quite grasp what that means. So what do we find? Well, if you take this little diagram here, so we have the dark gray house there, so that's the tree with their house in front of it. And what we found is, on average, it added about $7,600 to the price of a house. So fairly substantial premium there, that's compared to an otherwise similar house. But what the interesting thing was, it also added $12,800 to the price of houses within 100 feet. That's not to each individual one, but in total. So there was an average of 7.6 houses, so it's sort of $1,500, $2,000 apiece or so. So the interesting thing here is, that beer analogy, I didn't just pick that out of the air. What we're seeing here in Portland, I don't know how your tree ordinance works here, the provision and maintenance of street trees is the sole responsibility of an adjacent homeowner. So that person in the gray house bears 100% of the costs, and they get about a third of the benefit, in terms of the house price. Go ahead.
And when you say "street trees," you mean trees planted in the right-of-way?
Precisely.
Not just a tree that happens to be in their front yard, or?
Yes, precisely, yeah. In the public right-of-way. Yeah, so it would, and in fact, why we can, we stuck to east side Portland was because in the west side, it can be difficult to make that distinction, because, you know, you sometimes don't have that sidewalk, and is that tree in somebody's front yard, or is it actually in the right-of-way? So, yeah, and nearly always, it was in that green strip. There was a couple, we did count ones that, when there was a median down the middle, so like Ainsworth or Southeast 72nd, for example, we counted those. But, yeah, that's what we limit ourselves to.
And I have another question.
Yeah.
Was it houses that just had street trees in the public right-of-way and no other trees in the front yard?
No, we included those, and we controlled for those using satellite imagery. So we included also variables to describe the trees in the yard. So, but the, what we're talking about here is just
Right.
... the contribution of the street trees in the public right-of-way, so, yeah. So it was, that's, that's all there was there.
And your numbers are the average?
Precisely.
So even, I mean, you didn't, you didn't have a de minimis size over which you only measured, you know, certain diameter and up, or?
Yeah, a really sophisticated measure was, if you can see over the top of it, it's not a tree.
Okay.
That's how I just.
Okay.
Was your, was your control in the situation just no tree, or a house?
Well, in the case, you don't, it's not simply a case of, because you have these three-and-a-half thousand houses, so they all differ in all sorts of different ways. Only about half had street trees. So you have some without street trees, you have some with. I think the most was 12. We had one with 12 street trees, but I think the average was somewhere like .7 street trees, or something like that. But, yeah, you take account for all those other things, and you hope that that's what's left. So you have this situation, you have precisely the situation I was describing with the beer, where you have some poor sap paying for the six-pack and getting two of the beers. And in economics, we, you're going to call this an externality, or it's a spillover benefit, right? So, and what we know in these situations, when that happens, you're going to get, the markets don't do a good job. What they do is they under-provide that resource. So we know that, put another way, if we leave the provision of trees to individuals, we won't have the type of cities that as individuals we want. Because precisely the same reason, you may have somebody who, it may make sense for that block, for example, to have a tree, the total benefits may exceed the costs, but it may not get planted, because one person has to bear all those costs. So that's, that can be a problem, and I think you can start to see where you guys would come in there. In the case of the sort of, the trite little beer example, you had three people, so maybe you could come to an arrangement. But when you have benefits that can spill for quite a distance, and when I talk about some of the health ones, you'll see they can go a little further, or stormwater benefits, for example, might benefit the entire city, these sort of ad hoc arrangements aren't going to work. You're going to need some sort of collective action. It could be government, need not be homeowners association, it could be a nonprofit like Friends of Trees, but you do need some, or it could be often local government is what makes sense, because you guys have a bigger scope, right? You think bigger, you think in the size of the city. So that's where you have the opportunity to do that. Now, excuse me, where was I? So, let's talk a little bit about, more about the numbers here. So these are sort of capitalized values. You can turn these into annual benefits. So what I estimated is about $45 million a year in annual benefits from the street trees in Portland to the residents. And the city at the time estimated that the total public and private costs was about $4.6 million. So that's a 10 to 1 benefit-cost ratio, but 1,000% return on investment. It's kind of embarrassing, really. I mean, you'd have insider traders that would blush at that sort of rate of return. So that's, that's pretty impressive. Just for, if you want a comparison, anybody know what the best-performing stock was in the SP500 last year?
Last week?
Last year.
Oh, last year.
2014. Southwest Airlines, so 114%, barely worth bothering, when you've got these sort of rates of return available on your next door. But of course, the reason you don't have stockbrokers outside nurseries is that you pay for that tree, but the benefits don't entirely accrue to you. Now, the, one of the, anything that's going to increase the price of a home is necessarily going to increase property tax revenues as well. And so I estimate in this case is that they added about $13 million a year to property tax revenues. So if you had a hypothetical situation where if the city of Portland had adopted, they'd said overnight, which they certainly aren't going to, we'll assume the entire cost of providing and maintaining street trees, which is $4.6 million. That would more than pay for itself in terms of, just in terms of increased property tax revenues. So you have an opportunity where, I'm going to talk about a lot of these other benefits, but bear in mind, unlike other things, they're essentially self-financing, at least from your point of view. So it's probably not something you hear about a lot of the people when people come begging for money from you. This is in fact, they do, they do self-finance essentially. So about 2/3 of the US population owns a home, but a third rent. And the people who rent tend to be poorer, they're more likely to be ethnic minorities. So if you were to use results from just studies looking at sales price of homes for homeowners to inform environmental policy, you could have a problem, because there's maybe some environmental justice issues. You're not taking into account the environmental preferences of other people, of what about home renters? And this was somebody actually who asked me to talk once. I was very proud of this early days, my sales press study, you know, and somebody said, "What about renters?" And I sort of looked a little uncomfortable and said, "I'll find out." And indeed, I did. Now, one of the, this hedonic method, looking at sales price, is very popular with economists, mainly because it's fairly easy to do. Economists are profoundly lazy creatures, mostly. If you go down to Multnomah County Tax Assessor's Office, very nice guy called Dan Howard, he'll give you reams of data on, you know, you can look at, if I was to look up your house, for example, I could tell you the size of it, number of bedrooms, number of bathrooms, how much it sold for, type of fireplaces it had, all sorts of things, right? So it's easy to get those data. Rent data aren't collected centrally in the same way, so that's a little bit more of a pain. You don't see these studies happening as often. But my poor student, who I was lucky to have at the time, I decided in advance, it'd be nice to have a sample size of 1,000. So where do you go for rent data? Well, you go where everybody goes for everything, you go to Craigslist. And so what we did is, we started, I think this was October 2009, and every day I had a go, and if there was a single-family home, and it had listed an address, and it had a rental price, then we collected it, and we cross-referenced that with county records, and then we took us, I think, till January, well, us, took her, till January 2010 to get 1,000. And so we looked at this. Now, one of the motivations for this study as well, you know, do renters place the same value as trees as homeowners? And when I did the sales press study, this one, I didn't know what attributes of a tree mattered. And it turns out what matters is the number and the crown area. So when I say crown area, I mean, you know, you look at a tree from above, it kind of looks like a thing of broccoli, they're in a green circle, the area that that takes up. And you can actually do a pretty good job of measuring those remotely. So in the rent one, we said, "Well, let's look at both street trees and yard trees, because we can measure those." And mostly, we did that with Google Earth. Sometimes we had to go and peek over the fence to work out how many trees there were, but we managed to do that. And what we found is that, on average, a single-family home rented for $21 a month more if it had a street tree in front of it, and $5.62 if it had a yard tree. Which is interesting. So street trees about quadruple the value. Anybody a real estate person here? Any guesses why that would be?
Property manager.
Property manager. Why would, if you were to get, what would you guess as a, as a reason for why street trees would be more valuable, have a bigger impact on rent than a tree in the yard?
That's, yeah, that's curious to me.
I think it's just a curb appeal issue.
Yeah.
You know, just you, if you come up to a house, you have the, you know, it's right there. Street trees are interesting things, you know, because they're in that public space, a lot more accessible. Or you'd be somebody like me, and you, you know, you look at the maple tree in the backyard, and you think, "I'm going to have to rake the damn leaves." But if my plum tree in my partnership, I just let the leaf blow down the street into the neighbor's yard, so that's maybe another issue as well. They're only little leaves, it's not a problem. And so comparing the results of these two studies is not that straightforward, because in one case you have this impact on monthly rent, and one case you have the impact on the house price. But sparing you the mathematical contortions, what I found was there was no statistical significant difference between the value that home renters, that renters place on trees and homeowners place on trees. So I think this is kind of interesting, that it's not the tree itself, really. It's that stream of benefits you get from it that people value. You don't actually, owning it is not actually crucial. So that was, I think, kind of interesting to me. So that's the work I've done in the property market. Now I'm going to switch gears a bit and talk to you about public health, public health benefits of trees. So it's great that trees increase house price, and it's great that it can have an impact on property tax revenues. But what I'm going to try and show to you is that trees can literally be matter of life and death. I don't mean that as a metaphor, I mean that quite literally, the presence of trees can be the difference between life and death, which, unless you're a sociopath, should matter, right? That's, that's really fairly important stuff. So I'm going to try and spend the next few minutes here trying to prove that to you. And before I get to some specific studies, what I want to do is spend a little while complaining about my job being difficult, because, you know, who doesn't like that? And you guys are sitting there, you're not going to leave, the TV's on, you can't leave, too rude. So I think I can probably get away with a few minutes of whining about my job. So quantifying the health benefits of trees is not that straightforward. If it, if it was, it would have been done. So to illustrate how poor me, how difficult my life is, let's think about how, as we're in the health field, how would, say, a medical researcher look at how a drug would work? What would they do? Well, they use what's probably what some of you are familiar with, is a randomized controlled trial. So how does that work? Well, you typically recruit a group of people, say, one's suffering from a particular disease, you randomly split them in two. You have a treatment group, you give them a drug. You have the control group, you give them a placebo, and you see which does better. And if the treatment group does better, hey presto, the drug works. Let's face it, half-breadth monkey could do that. I mean, it's not very difficult, is it? And you may say that's me saying that, a professional jealousy, and you'd probably be mostly right about that. But let's give you an example. Let's say, let's imagine we have a nasty, a nasty disease that turns people purple. So there we are. It's really quite tragic, and you recruit them. Normally, obviously, you wouldn't just have one person in each group, but to keep it simple. So we have these, these tragic purple people, and a drug company comes up with a drug called Purple Away, and they decide it's going to, they think it's going to cure these purple people. And so you have, you give the, half the people Purple Away and half the placebo. Purple Away group gets better, fantastic, there you go, the drug works. And what's important here is that you can say that the drug caused that improvement. You can say that there's a causal relationship. And that's because this is an experiment. You've manipulated the world in some fashion, right? You've given them a drug, and you've done that randomly. So you can say that. So, okay, well, so the medical researchers do it. Well, let's do that with trees, right? If that's how they do it, we should give it a try. So we're back to our tragic purple people, maybe trees make purple people better. So let's go, and let's plant a sapling there. Well, you can start to see the problem, can't you? Because the drug works straight away, trees are kind of tiresome. One of the things about it, they tend to grow rather slowly, so you wouldn't expect to get the full benefits from the little sapling. So you're going to have to wait a while. So it's a bit tiresome, but okay, you can wait a while. So you wait a while, tree gets bigger, people getting older. You know, my, my boss starts to call me up, says, you know, "Why haven't you published a paper in 10 years?"
I'm waiting for the trees to grow.
That's what I say to her, I say, "When's it growing? It's not my fault. And tree's not growing fast enough, come on, work with me here." He grumbles, "Okay." And I tell him, you know, it's going to be crazy, it's going to be on the front cover of Science, it's going to be absolutely great. And so we wait another 10 years, and the tree, and now he's really getting annoyed, and I say, "Look, any day now, we're going to see an effect." Unfortunately, this time, this person decides they're going to retire to Florida, and they leave.
Leaves the tree?
Yeah, leaves the tree, leaving me high and dry. The, the experiment, you know, obviously is a disaster, and more importantly, I end up losing my job. So we certainly don't want that. So, and by the way, an economist, I don't have to apologize for being selfish, it's considered a good attribute if you're an economist, so. So what do we do? What do we do? Well, I guess I could sort of, you know, keep the person there at gunpoint, say, "You can't move." You might think that's impractical, but this actually has happened in Forest Service, this sort of behavior. Are you familiar with the 1910 Big Fire, Ed Pulaski? It was a famous, this is a big fire year, and he kept his crew in a mineshaft in Idaho, and he kept them there at gunpoint. I don't know why he was carrying a gun and a fire, but he was. And, you know, he got a fire, a fire tool named after him, he was considered a hero. I suspect there may have been some cultural changes, and I would not be greeted necessarily as a hero if I stopped people retiring at gunpoint, just so my study would work. So that's, that's not really very practical. So what are we going to do? How are we going to find out? Well, what we're going to do is, we are going to rely on the dark arts of observational research, which is what I do. And we don't impose a treatment on the world, we don't give somebody a drug, we don't plant a tree. At its simplest, we simply look at areas with more trees and see if people there are healthier than in areas with less trees. Simple enough, sounds straightforward, so let's have a, let's try that. So imagine we've got, a little person, we've got this young lady there with a tree, and then this guy without one, and we follow them, and this guy dies, and so, right, that means that it was a lack of tree that killed him, right? Well, obviously not, it's ludicrous, because they're different in other ways. And ideally, you compare two people who are identical, in the same way as when I was talking about the house price study, you would compare two houses identical. It's even more difficult with people, because people vary in ways you can't even see. So you can never really have two identical people unless you clone them or something. So that's not going to happen. So what are you going to do? Well, let's, let's revive this poor chap and start again. Well, what you can do is, you can use statistical techniques, and what you can do is you could control for these differences. What does that mean? It means that you take those differences into account, you sort of take them out of the comparison. So for example, we know that race is an important driver of public health, so we need to control for race. So now we do that. It's not that these people are the same race, but we're treating them as if they are. We've taken race out of the comparison, we don't need to worry about that now. It's not the only difference, age, so let's, let's control for age. Income, big one, we're gonna control for that. And then let's control for gender. So now we've, we've taken these things into account with statistical tools. It's as if we're comparing people who are the same. And then this person does still die tragically. Um, does that, is the longer life of that person caused by the tree? No, we can't say that. Can't say that, but what we can say is uh, that it's not because of differences in age, income, gender, race, things like that, we've taken that out. So enough cartoons, and I say that reluctantly, I'd rather just sit here and show you cartoons all evening, but I suppose you probably want some actual science, so. Um, let's talk about a specific study I did with health. And in this one, I looked at the relationship between uh, trees and birth outcomes um, in Portland. Now, why on earth would I look at trees and birth outcomes? It's a little bit of a strange thing for somebody to do. Well, for some pragmatic reasons. One, there's an enormous amount of data on birth certificates. You have data on the babies, their, their gestational age, their weight, but also a lot of information about parents. Their, their race, their age, their education. Just this type of thing that you need to take into account, so. And there's a statutory requirement to report births in this country, so over ninety-nine percent of births are reported. So great data, which always makes me prick up my ears. So that's good. Um, the other thing here, and this is super, super important. When you're doing this type of observational research, it's really important that you have a story going in. That is, there's a plausible link between, in this case, trees and birth outcomes. You have that plausible link before you even collect a shred of data. You don't go the other way around, which, you know, people call data mining, where you collect data and then you try and come up, you know, these correlations just happen by chance and you come up with these ridiculous stories. You start saying things like, well, people born on Tuesdays are left, more likely to be left-handed. You know, just ludicrous stuff like that. So you need a story before you start collecting data. Well, what story possibly could link trees and birth outcomes? Well, we know that if you put people in the natural environment, you reduce short-term markers of stress. You put you out there, if we were to take you out of the stressful situation of having to listen to me, then you, we would put you outside in the park, your heart rate would go down, your blood pressure would go down, saliva, cortisol. All those things would happen, stress would go down. And we know that stress is an important uh, driver of birth outcomes. Also, we know that trees can improve air quality. And uh, we certainly know that air quality is an important driver of a lot of health outcomes and certainly birth outcomes. So here, we have this plausible story, good. Now this next point, um, hmm. And I say this, some, please don't physically hand me for saying this particular thing. Is, and I say this as a man who's never had kids, pregnancy only lasts nine months. Now, why is that relevant? Uh, well, because I knew the address where women lived when they had their baby. So what does that tell us about their exposure to trees over the course of pregnancy? Does every woman stay there for nine months? No, I'm sure some people moved, but nine months isn't that long. So I would think that most of the women would have stayed there for most of all of the time. So if I knew their address, where I knew a fair bit about how they were exposed to trees. Let's think about something like heart disease. Let's imagine that I had uh, the addresses of people where they live when they had a heart attack admitted to the hospital. What would that tell me about somebody's exposure to heart disease, uh, to trees? Over the course of a disease that might have causes to go back decades? Wouldn't tell me a great deal. Unless somebody happened to have stayed in that same house for sixty years. You know, it wouldn't tell you a great deal. So pregnancy is very appealing because it's relatively short, I mean, we know what causes it, we know when it ends. So as a disease, if you will, it's something that's very nice to study. So I looked at five thousand six hundred and ninety-six Singleton live births, so I just looked at not twins and triplets. This is to women, again, I looked at Eastside Portland in two thousand six and seven. And I looked at two adverse birth outcomes. The first is small for gestational age. Uh, and that is simply if you're below the tenth percentile based on gestational age and gender, underweight. Was the baby born underweight? And then the other one was preterm. If a baby was born before thirty-seven weeks gestational age. So we looked at those and clearly, even the most adentary advocate among you is not gonna say that trees are the main or only determinant of birth outcomes. There's all sorts of other things that go into that. So we control for demographics of both parents, and we took that into account. Also, previous births, if a, if a woman has had an uncomplicated pregnancy in the past, they're more likely to have one in the future. And then prenatal care, that prenatal care woman received, the type of insurance she had, um, distanced the stuff. So we liked this, good stuff like parks and public transportation, bad stuff like freeways. So we took that into account. We even uh, looked at crime, we know crime can be stresser. We went down to the attributes of a house, even its heating and cooling system. This was driven by about, oh, five or six years ago, my sister-in-law, she had a baby in it in late September. And I remember seeing her around Labor Day and uh, it was, you know, ninety degrees. She was eight months pregnant, she did not look like she was enjoying herself at all. So, you know, I thought, well, you know, maybe if a house is air-conditioned, you know, maybe that might be less stressful. So uh, it didn't actually make any difference as it turns out, but I, we tried to think of everything we could. And um, then, only after taking all that into account, what we did is we looked at tree canopy, and I should say for privacy reasons, these aren't women in the actual sample, they're just randomly ones, but. On the, we looked at tree canopy and fifty, hundred and two hundred meter buffers around the centre of each house's lot. So on the, on the left there, we just have a high-resolution aerial photograph. And can you see the green rectangles? So just the house's lot, with the red dot is the middle. And then on the right, this is what we call classified aerial imagery, just using a computer algorithm. You classify uh, uh, each little square into either green, which is trees, or whatever that sort of nondescript off-yellow colour is, which is not trees. So, and I, just for clarity, I put the fifty meter buffers in there, that's all. And what we found is after taking all that into account, women with more trees within fifty meters of their homes were less likely to have underweight babies. Um, and there was no effect on preterm. Now, um, one of the things, before I go further, to look at is, look at that fifty meter buffer and look at how much of that fifty meter buffer is occupied by the lot of the house. It's not a great deal, is it? So if the trees in that circle are benefiting that woman, most of them are not on her lot. They're not ones that she's paying to maintain. They're gonna be in neighbours' houses, they're gonna be in street trees. So again, what do we know? The spillover effect. So anytime we have that, we're getting the spillover effect, we know that if we leave the provision of trees to these individuals, we're gonna get too few trees from a public health point of view. So now you may look at this and say, well, that's all fine and good, uh, but Jeff may have just screwed something up. Or it may be a statistical oddity, actually both pretty decent explanations. But strange thing happened. So I published this paper in two thousand eleven. Uh, in two thousand twelve, a team in Spain found that women with more greenness, and they, they measured this with satellite imagery, uh, within a hundred meters of their homes had higher birth weights. So completely different research team in Spain. Two thousand thirteen, Southern California, more women with more greenness within fifty meters of their homes had higher birth weights. And this held even after account for differences in air quality. Two thousand fourteen, a team in Germany found that mothers with more greenness within five hundred meters of their homes had higher birth weights. And these results held even after account for differences in air pollution and noise. Two thousand fourteen in Canada, a team found that mothers with more greenness within a hundred meters of their homes had higher birth weights. Again, consistent, consistent, consistent results. And this held even after account for air pollution, noise, neighbourhood walkability, proximity to a park. There's actually been three other studies, but I think you get the point. Interestingly, this guy is at OSU. I need to, I, I met him at a meeting in Cincinnati and he candidly told me, I thought your study wouldn't hold up, I just needed to control for other stuff and the result would disappear. It didn't, so that's, that was nice for me, anyway. So um, one study could be an anomaly, but seven? Yeah, yeah, it is. Not saying it's a definitive, but uh, something there. And it's, it's, it's important, birth outcomes are a big deal. Right, so imagine if I have a healthy-weight baby in this hand and an underweight baby in this hand. Saying aside the gross irresponsibility of giving me two children, but let's just say somebody had. That the difference between the two might be a woman's exposure to trees during pregnancy. This is something fundamental about our relationship with the natural environment. But birth outcomes are very important, if you're born underweight or you're born prematurely, far more likely to die of serious health complications at birth. And in some ways, you can be set on a health trajectory for life, even if you survive. Uh, you can, they can have health problems that go on for life. And the, the cost of treating um, premature and underweight babies is staggering. Neonatal intensive care units are incredibly expensive. Now, earlier in the year, I was, I was giving a talk in Tampa. And at the end of this, this guy came up to me and said, you know, uh, seven years ago, my, my son was born prematurely. And we were talking about costs and he asked, he was very keen to share his story, so. This is Jack, a few hours after he was born. He weighed one pound, one ounce, he was given no chance of survival. And he spent four months in the neonatal intensive care unit. Um, and he survived, he survived. Seven years later, the only weird thing is he's playing ice hockey and he lives in Tampa, so. And that, that seems a little strange, but there's worse things, I guess. Um, it cost, his, his medical costs were eight million dollars. So just to give you, and I'm absolutely not saying trees would have saved this kid. I don't know why, the reasons in this case. But you don't have to have a very big impact. Healthcare costs are so staggering. Eight million dollars is more than twice the urban forestry budget of the city of Portland. So you don't have to have very much effect to start to see things. And also, um, there was a fascinating study done a few years ago, I think it was in Germany. And they looked at people who visited somebody in an intensive care unit. And you had to visit somebody for at least five days in a row. And they took brain images of the visitors. And for up to six months, they could see signs of trauma in the brain. It's horrifying going to intensive care units, I know if you, those of you who had the misfortune of doing so, it is not a good thing. Um, and so if you have, if you, by planting trees, you can avoid just a few. You may be effect, you know, increasing, improving the health of kids, may have an impact on healthcare costs and also avoid horribly traumatic experiences for family and, and the, one can only assume the children as well. So despite the results here, of mine and the seven other studies, they're consistent, they all suffer from the nice tree, nice neighbourhood effect. Where are the nicest trees?
Nice neighbourhoods.
Yeah, with whiter, wealthier, better educated, right? This is not limited to Oregon, it's everywhere, okay? And we know that race, education and income are important drivers of health. Now, we, I tried to control for them, but my admission here is, my cartoons made that seem a little easier and a little more definitive than in fact it is. One thing you never know if you've, I mean, you never get, you never run a test and say, I have captured everything, it's okay. I mean, you try and put everything in, but you don't know for sure. So you're always a little anxious that you may have missed something. And I was, I was in this terrible meeting three or four years ago, well, it's kind of redundant. I mean, you guys sit through meetings, you know how much fun they are. But this one had sociologists in, and that makes any meeting far, far worth, far worth. Sociologists always speak in paragraphs, man, they just, they just go. Anyway, they don't mix well, sociologists and economists. So I was desperately trying not to listen. And um, and what I realised was you could flip this question on its head. Okay, if trees are good for you, killing them should be bad for you. Would that seem unreasonable? One follows from the other, one would think. That, that's actually what passes for revelation for me, I was pretty excited by that. Um, you don't seem anywhere near as excited as I was, but I will, I will try and explain that. Um, so why is that important? Well, let's imagine a different type of tree experiment now. Previously, we had unhealthy people and we planted trees and that was really boring because it took forever to grow. So let's instead, let's start with healthy trees, healthy people with mature trees, and then let's just cut some down and see what happens. Now, this was theoretically flawless idea, completely impractical, so the thing that scientists are really good at coming up with, you know, I have a particular talent for that. Clearly, nobody's gonna volunteer for this type of study. Um, you would probably get shot at if you did this. However, however, could you take, what happens if something else did your dirty work for you? What happens if it's not me going around with a chainsaw? What happens if something else was killing trees? Could you take advantage of that and try and see if there's a public health impact? And um, the answer is yes, you can, but you need something that kills um, a lot of trees in a short amount of time. What could do that?
A disease.
Fantastic, thank you. You can come to all my talks. In fact, unfortunately, tree diseases are exponentially rising in the world, I mean, trade, they, they really are, they become more and more of a problem. And probably the nastiest in the last, oh, ten to fifteen years in this country would be the Emerald Ash Borer. Hasn't got this far, and it's in, it's far west of Colorado, I believe now. And it's killed hundreds of millions of trees since two thousand two.
What is it?
The Emerald Ash Borer.
It's an insect.
It's, it's uh, it's called Emerald Ash Borer because it's green and it burrows holes in ash trees. I like good literal names, so it's, it's good. So yeah, so I actually haven't got a picture of it, it's a very pretty little thing. It's just iridescent green. But uh, th- this is what it does, this is what you can look forward to. This is Toledo, Ohio, two thousand six, this is the same street in two thousand nine. So, yeah.
You tell them all over again.
They're gone, the ash trees are extinct in this country essentially, they're all gonna die. You can treat them as a way of uh, staggering removal, but you know, the, the, all twenty-two North American species of ash die. Two to five years, they're all gonna go. Not very nice thought, um, but there you have it. But fantastic for me, that's the good news. Because you have, again, you don't seem to greet this good news with this, this joy which I did. Um, so why is this fantastic? Well, because you're gonna get a lot of trees killed in a short amount of time. And even better still, um, what you have is, because we know that, yeah, I mean, i- we, let's imagine a different type of experiment now. So imagine these people and let's imagine they're in different parts of the country. So the Emerald Ash Borer comes along on the, on the one on the left there, you know, you know, defolies tree, dies and then, you know, we think they may die. Okay, that's my hypothesis, this is what I think might happen. Um, now, in the case, you know, when I had, I showed you these examples before, we have the problem because at one point in time, we know that the presence of trees is correlated with edu- education, race, income, all that stuff. And there's no way of getting around that. But the loss of trees is not. One of the things about um, the EAB is it's wonderfully egalitarian. It don't care. It will kill trees in rich neighbourhoods, it will kill trees in poor neighbourhoods. White neighbourhoods, minority neighbourhoods, it don't care, it's gonna kill them all. So this is good, well, again, for everybody, well, it's for me, it could be bad for everybody else, but it's very good for me. Um, and so in fact, when you see the pattern of it spread, this, this little animation will show you, this is in Detroit. It'll go through a couple of times, you see it has this wave-like pattern, but also you see these satellite populations popping up way in advance. It's often moved accidentally firewood. But you see when it finishes up here, in fact, this is, I think this is just to two thousand thirteen. You see uh, Boulder County in Colorado there, um, hundreds of miles from the nearest case in eastern Kansas. Now, this moves pretty quickly and it has this sort of random pattern of spread. Can you imagine a demographic factor changing like this? Can you imagine race or education or income changing this quickly or changing in a pattern like this? It just, it just doesn't happen, you know, it's just not that. So while the presence of trees might be correlated with this other stuff, the loss of trees is not. So that's why this is this, this great opportunity. And so, um, I mean, look at the, from Kansas to Boulder there, I mean, that could have moved in a matter of hours in a, you know, in the back in a trailer full of firewood. But you're not gonna move high schoo- improved high school graduation rates in a few hours along a freeway. I mean, it just doesn't work, this is not, this is not how things are. So I decided to look at a couple of, of causes, so, you know, my hypothesis is that you're gonna see worse public health in these areas. So I decided to look at two causes of death that could plausibly be linked with trees. Again, we've gotta have that story going in, can't just data mine, very bad. So what do I look at? Um, cardiovascular disease and lower, this is, I've had twenty-one years in this country and I de-anglicised nearly all my speech, but the one word I can never get is, is it respiratory or respiratory?
Respiratory.
I'll probably say the other one then, so you know what I mean. Somebody demonstrating respiratory there for us right now, yes. So we have probably the, the smoke, but um, so I looked at those because again, there's two, there's, what could link tree loss to those? Again, we have stress, we have uh, air quality, also, there's other possibilities as well. We know that area, that the natural environment can encourage people to exercise. Um, we also know interestingly that areas of the natural environment have improved social contact. People bring people out into public space. And one of the fascinating things, public health is loneliness is really bad for you. Isolation has been, you know, time and time and time again, shown to have an impact on public health. So uh, there's, there's several mechanisms that could link tree loss to these uh, causes of death. And I looked at death rather than just disease incidence, precisely, again, for data requirements, because we know that ninety-nine percent of deaths are recorded, when they're recorded, we um, code them, we give them a type of death, cause of death. So mortality data are great, so that's why I looked at that. And in, in this case, the little squares here are counties. And so what I, I did is I looked at county-level mortality and I started in nineteen ninety, well before Emerald Ash Borer. And I went uh, through two thousand seven, which was the latest data I could get at the time. And um, and so you had this long running period, then the bug arrives and, you know, let's see what happens. And what I found, and I controlled for differences in demographics between the counties and all that fun stuff. And what I found was ca- ca- counties infested with Emerald Ash Borer had higher rates of cardiovascular and low respiratory disease. And that this impact got greater the longer an infestation progressed. Right, so there's a kind of a dose response relationship, because it takes a while for the trees to die. You would expect then that, um, you wouldn't expect the mortality to happen straight away. So the more trees die, you're seeing more people dying, uh, which is the type of thing one would expect to see. Another thing we saw is we saw a bigger impact in wealthier counties. Why would that be?
More trees.
Yep, more better-maintained trees, if they provide a bigger health impact, they die, bigger impact on, uh, bigger negative impact. So yeah, we saw that in, in wealthier counties. And what I found is across six years, so it's two thousand two through two thousand seven, and fifteen states, additional fifteen thousand deaths from lower respiratory disease and six thousand, fifteen from cardiovascular and lo- and six thousand from lower respiratory disease. So um, I certainly don't know how sick people were before they died. I'm not saying that a perfectly healthy twenty-year-old dies because a leaf falls off a tree. Tree loss is a risk factor for death in the same way that smoking or age or genetics would be, so. It's um, let, let's look at this for example. Here we have, to demonstrate this, we have this young lady on the right, very healthy. And then there's a chap on the left who seems to be wanting to collect every risk factor he can possibly find. But they both have trees, so they're okay. But along comes Emerald Ash Borer, gets rid of their trees. So air quality gets worse for both of them and uh, the stress gets worse for both of them. But he's the only one who dies because he's got the other risk factors, right? Notice he keeps the bottle upright, um, just in case the EMTs were to revive him. Doesn't want, he's a true dedicated uh, drinker there. By the way, I don't make these cartoons, there's somebody at work who does inform me, she's fantastic. Um, so when you get sort of eye-popping results like this, if you have a, some sense, which is not, or a delicate ego, which is more me, you don't tell anybody. You don't even tell people involved in the study. You sit and try and disprove your own results in your office with the door closed. Better to be privately disappointed than publicly humiliated later. Um, I've a, I've a, as an Englishman, the most profound emotion I can feel is embarrassment. And I try and avoid it at nearly all costs, so I was desperately, I'd, I mean, I would be disappointed if these results didn't hold up. So what, what I did is I said, well, let's look at a cause of death that tree loss couldn't possibly affect, accidental death. You know, beetles are not gonna cause car accidents, mate, that's not it. And we didn't see any impact. That's not definitive, but it's encouraging. So we saw an impact where there could be one, on cardiovascular disease, low respiratory, but we didn't see one in accidental death where there couldn't be. So that, that was, that was good. Now, thi- this is what we call an ecological study, that is, I looked at county-level mortality. And there's some limitations there, because just because And there's some limitations there because just because results apply at a county level does not mean they apply to individuals within a county. Now, why did I then look at county level? Well, for pragmatic reasons, it's easier to get hold of county level data. Truth is, I thought this was a long-shot study, so I was gonna, you know, not go to the extra effort of getting individual level data. But uh, and I should say that as an economist, I was being efficient, not lazy. That would be how I would term it. But I did, once I got the results, I was like, okay, I need to go the extra step. Let's see if we can find an impact on individual health records. And so um, what I got access to here is the, are any of you familiar with the Women's Health Initiative? It's a, it's a big, what we call a cohort study in public health. That is, you recruit a group of people who are similar in some fashion. Uh, then there's a famous nurses study in this country that's been going on for decades. The Women's Health Initiative uh, focused on uh, the health of post-menopausal women. So it started in the mid-nineties. It was focused on the three biggest, uh, they call it death or reduced quality of life. So it was cardiovascular disease, cancer and osteoporosis. And women were fifty to seventy-nine at recruitment and there's a hundred and sixty-one thousand of them. So just fantastic, huge study. And so, um, what, this, these results, actually, this just got accepted in a journal on Monday, so they are now officially peer-reviewed. Uh, this, these next ones. And what I found was that a woman's risk of having a stroke, a heart attack, or dying from cardiovascular disease is twenty-five percent higher in counties infested with Emerald Ash Borer. So when you saw that loss of trees, we were seeing a significant increase in cardiovascular disease risk. And this is after I control for age, race, education, income, smoking status, body mass index, exercise, emotional wellbeing, diabetes, hypertension. All this stuff, right? So, we're seeing that. Now, again, this is one observational study. So, well, actually, it's two now. We have the county level, individual level, and they're consistent. Is this definitive? No, but it's a steady drip, drip of evidence. Yeah, we do seem to be seeing uh, an impact there. So that, that was encouraging to see that significance. Um, so, I'm gonna stay on health, but I am gonna switch gears in a way in which if I was a gambling man, I am a gambling man, so I, I'm willing to bet that nobody can guess what I'm gonna show the next slide is off. It's to do with health. It's gonna be a slide of moss. Why on earth am I showing you a picture of moss? Why was that got to do with health? Well, we've got some recent studies where what I've done is, we're using moss to map air quality in Portland. Why on earth would one do such a thing? Well, there's a number of reasons. So thi- this was taken a little outside the city. You can tell because there's the moss there. This particular species is used, but you see all the nice shaggy lichen there. The lichens are kind of weenies. They, they get in the sea and they just die. So we use, this, this species of moss is pretty, uh, I mean, we, we had samples under I four or five and things. Whereas the lichens are dead long ago. So we, this particular species of moss is very resilient. Doesn't seem to really care much about air pollution. But moss and lichens are interesting. They don't have any roots. So they get all their moisture, all their nutrients from the air. So these little sponges, they don't get anything from the ground, they get anything from the tree, they get all from the air. So then they're really good little uh, sponges that soak up air pollution. Are these little living sponges or bio-indicators, we call them. So we can, they, they're very good at mapping air quality because that's all they're gonna get. If you see a pollutant in the moss, it's got it from the air, because that's the only place it can get it from. Can't get it from anywhere else. They're also, you know, taking moss off a tree, cleaning it up, sending it to the lab will cost you a couple hundred bucks. Um, they're a lot cheaper than conventional air quality monitors. They're very expensive. The EPA has a series of monitors throughout the country. You know how many it has in Portland? One. You may as well have none, frankly. But, you know, it apparently costs eighty thousand a year just to operate. I don't know what it costs to buy something ungodly. So these things, a lot cheaper. Um, so it allows us to create much more high-resolution maps. Um, they also wa- so that's, that's nice. And so what, I'm gonna show you results here is one part of the study. I wish we hadn't chosen to study this particular class of pollutants because I can never say it. So I'm gonna say it very clearly one time and then I'm not gonna say it anymore. Polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons. Right, P A Hs. That, I, I, that's it, I'm done. I can't say it again. Um, and there are class of pollutants that come from burning mainly fossil fuels. Um, they, they do also come from wood burning. So we have, so there's plenty of P Hs in the air this weekend. Um, uh, also, they're, they come from burning any organic matter, so there are big carcinogen in cigarette smoke. So just burning anything organic. And the EPA, there's sixteen of them, they've said are either carcinogenic or they believe to be carcinogenic. And the, the first ever chemically identified carcinogen was benzoyl pyrene was, is indeed a P A H. Um, but even before we knew about uh, P Hs as chemicals, we know that exposing people to the products of combustion is not a good thing. In seventeen seventy-five, there was a doctor in London found uh, increased levels of scrotal cancer of all hideous things in chimney sweeps. Uh, in the nineteenth century, several doctors noticed high levels of lung cancer among people working with colta. So we know that. So we know that being around things that burn is not good. Um, the problem is, is we don't really know much about P Hs in the gen- or nearly all the work that's been done on the health impacts of P Hs has been in industrial settings because we don't actually know what the levels are. We know what they are within a few hundred meters of the one EPA air quality monitor. But once I started to get into air quality, I was horrified how little we know about our air. I mean, it's, it's not really very encouraging at all. Um, so, this was from December the second to December the twenty-third in two thousand and thirteen. A colleague of mine, Sarah Jovan and I, we collected moss samples from three hundred and forty-seven deciduous trees across Portland. So uh, that was, we spent about sixty hours a week in a minivan together. Um, and so that, this is sort of, this is, you see when you're out on the exurbs, this is, I think in Happy Valley. The moss is kind of happy and shaggy. It was, it was, I don't know if you remember December two thousand and thirteen, it was dry and cold. One, one morning, it was twelve degrees and I can assure you those blue nitro gloves are not very warm. I was numb to my elbows. And it was hideous. Uh, but when you get, you see also there's some li- lichens on those trees. You get more downtown and you can see that most everything is, the lichens have died off and you really just have that streak of moss. You can tell that's a colder day because I've got my woolly hound. Um, so we collected these, uh, and we, we cleaned them up in the lab and then we, we had them tested for P Hs. And then what we tried to do is develop statistical models, say, well, why P H is high in one place, lower in another. And I'm just gonna show you what could, well, what could make P Hs go up? Well, things that burn. So roads, airports, uh, wood burning stoves, things like that. What could make them go down? Well, uh, vegetation can. Uh, we know from just, from laboratory experiments that they'll stick to leaves, just in a, in a physical sense. But also some of the smaller ones can be uptaken into the stomata. They can actually be brought up into the leaves of a tree. They're not actually toxic to the trees. They're toxic to us, but seem to bother the trees, or the moss for that matter. So I'm just gonna show you results for two of them because of sixteen would get really, really, really boring. So I'm not gonna do that. But the first one I'm gonna show you is for pyrene. Pyrene is the most common of them. So this is the map. Well, well, actually, this is first, just to, you know, just to refresh you, there's Portland. We've got the rivers, the roads, and then just dark green is tree cover. Light green is uh, low, so grass and shrubs. So we may flash backwards and forwards to see that. But just so, keep in mind, obviously Forest Park's a lot of trees, but you can see down to Lake Oswego, trees. And then kind of over there in Happy Valley, we've got, we've got quite a lot of trees too. So bear that in mind as I show this. So thi- this map is of pyrene. And the green is the highest and the pink is the lowest. And if you care about numbers, this is actually a logarithmic scale, so there's actually a huge difference here. So unsurprisingly, the, the highest levels are clustered around the freeways, you know, around four or five in particular there. In fact, if you look, you can even see the, the, there's bigger sort of flares at the junctions of major roads there. But where do you see the lowest values? Um, you see them in Forest Park, you see them again, you know, over in Happy Valley, you see them down in Lake Oswego. Um, so that's that. So what I'm gonna show you now is, if you take the, the median value we found was a hundred and twelve micrograms per kilogram. You can immediately forget that number because there's absolutely no median. So it just doesn't, all I'm saying is I'm starting at the median value. And we, we really did a lot of abuse to our variables here. So what I'm gonna show you is, what happens when you increase the road density or the vegetation density by one standard deviation? So for those of you where any mention of statistical things makes you queasy, all I'm saying is I'm gonna show you equivalent increases. What happens if we increase the roads by an amount? What happens if we increase vegetation by an equivalent amount? That's all. So, what do we see? Well, um, there we go. So, if we increase roads by one standard deviation, pyrene goes up by nine percent in the moss. So not surprising, right? Okay, and then, what happens if we increase tree canopy? Well, pyrene goes down by seventeen percent. And then if we increase grass and shrubs, it goes down by eleven percent. So it's interesting here, uh, back, is that, yes, roads are important. But it appears that vegetation is as, if not more, important. Now, one of the fascinating things there is, because a lot of public health research is doom and gloom. Like, oh, this is bad for you. Living next to a freeway is bad for you. Okay, so what are we gonna do? Oh, we'll close the freeway, move the freeway. Well, that's not gonna happen, is it? Moving freeway is not really very practical. Planting trees, yeah, it kind of is. You can do something. Trees is something you can do to mitigate some of the harm that comes from that. Some of you may be familiar, if we go back here, that uh, along two oh five, on the west side of two oh five, Friends of Trees is doing a tree planting in a partnership with Department of Transportation. It wasn't done for public health reasons, but I think it's probably a very good idea. You're knocking down those pollutants before they can get into residential areas. So there are some pollution sources that are really gonna be hard to avoid. But trees may be one low-cost way of actually mitigating that.
Does it uh,
Yep.
Change with whether it's an evergreen or a deciduous tree?
We did, we weren't able to distinguish because with the type of imagery we had, we couldn't tell the difference between the two. My guess, and we did this in December. So probably this is a lower bound as well because obviously the deciduous trees are of leaves then. So I would imagine that you would have a bigger impact with evergreen trees. Um, but we, we were limited by the, that classified area of imagery shows you, we can't distinguish. Soon we, we're now getting stuff, I don't know if you're familiar with LiDAR, which is, you know, we have three-dimensional stuff. I work with a LiDAR specialist and we, we may be able to start to distinguish between evergreen and, and deciduous by the shapes, trees and height and things. So we may be able to get at that. It's a good question. The answer is I don't know. Um, I would imagine there would be. P H is the highest in the winter. We also did find an impact from residential wood burning. Wasn't the biggest one, but there was.
Wood burning?
Wood burning. But only for people who used, interestingly, it was uh, people who used it not as a primary heat source. Because primary heat sources, people tend to use like pellet stoves, things like that, which are quite efficient. But people who use it as a secondary heat source, just fireplaces. Because P Hs, you get more, the more inefficient the combustion. So, you know, if you get a fireplace, then it tends to be more inefficient combustion than say, you know, a pellet stove or something like that. So, we'll go past that. And now I'm gonna talk, just show you the, quickly the results of benzoyl pyrene. So this is the nasty one, foul, foul. Uh, very, very carcinogenic, you see, really tucked along the freeways. Also, you know, from an environmental justice point of view, this should make any reasonable person a little queasy. You know, where, where, where's the worst pollution? Uh, where's the best, you know, where's the best air quality? Very clearly, look at the West Hills. Uh, whereas if you look at some of the inner southeast, well, or out along the, you know, eighty-four or out along two oh five. You know, there's some really uncomfortable environmental justice issues involved here. Um, and you, you've found similar results here of benzoyl pyrene. If uh, you went, roads made it go up by thirteen percent and trees made it go down by twelve percent. So similar, not quite as big of impact. No effect, um, uh, no effects are from grass and shrubs. So, the next step, what we're doing now is we're trying to use these maps to predict health outcomes. So we've got these maps. Do they tell us anything about? Because we're, it's all very well, okay, we've got differences in air pollution, but does it matter from a public health point of view? We're also looking at some, um, and I can't tell you too much about this, but we're also mapping heavy metal pollution. And what we've found, some kind of alarming things where we're working with DQ and we found that some of the biggest heavy metal polluters actually, uh, they, they don't have permits. They don't know, uh, DQ didn't, weren't even aware of them. And so I, I can't tell you what they are yet because they have to, DQ have to inform them. There's legal processes going on. But we've been able to identify um, some fairly major sources of heavy metal pollution that weren't known. Because we have one monitor. How are you gonna find out?
Right.
There's one, one pollutant, one polluter that's particularly bad for cadmium, which is a quite toxic metal. Has been polluting since the mi- it's been there since the mid-seventies and nobody knew.
And you determined all this from the moss sampling, yeah? Wow.
Yep, yep.
And so your moss sampling creates a baseline where in ten years, you could go back and see what impact those trees along the west side of two oh five.
Precisely.
Yeah.
Precisely, you could do precisely that. And in, and in, in, with the statistical models here, we could predict what we think would happen. So we could say, you know, okay, if you, you know, you can predict, well, how big are the trees gonna be in twenty years? You know, you could make a, some assumption. And then you could say, well, we would expect it to reduce the P H exposure of these people by this amount. So yeah, I mean, it's um, it, it's, it's, I mean, again, why I talked, I, I do think that trees should be considered an essential part of our public health infrastructure. And when I say essential, I mean that it can't easily be substituted by other things. You can't take green pills in the same way. Some of the benefits you get, you just can't get. And then some of them you can get just very cost-effectively. And I'm not saying this, you know, I'm, I'm not, I'm not making moral arguments. I'm making arguments grounded in self-interest. You know, these are, because again, I'm an economist, so I believe in the power of self-interest. Planting trees can be supremely self-interested. And you know, self-interest is a lot more potent than altruism. So yeah, I mean, I think because when we gain environmental arguments, people become very moralistic about this and very preachy. And you know, maybe part of what I hope to do is say, let's maybe try and have some facts, possibly. Yeah, just a thought. And you know, maybe we could say, well, these are cost-effective ways of, of achieving things that we want, like not being dead and things like that. Um, so, that's good. And, and actually that achieving things, now I'm gonna switch gears. And by the way, I, I can, I, I've got a few other benefits to talk about. I'm gonna be done with health now. And when you, you can call, you know, if, if you just have sick of me at any point, say stop, or we can just have it go into discussion. But I, I was gonna talk a little bit about crime next.
I had one question.
Yes.
And you probably didn't monitor for it, um, uh, but ozone from traffic. I, I remember hearing that a lot of it floats down into this, this part of the, the city. Or the, the metro area. I don't, I don't know.
We didn't do ozone. They, that can be done. One of the things what we did is we concentrated on stuff that you can get ozone. One ozone is fairly well dispersed, so actually, monitors that are far apart do a reasonable job there because it's, it's fairly well dispersed. The other thing is you can measure it with what's called passive monitors. Basically, you stick out a tube with a coffee filter in. But P Hs are both partic- particulate and gas. And so you can't get them with cheap monitors. So we were kind of focusing on stuff that was, you know, harder to get at. So that, but that's my answer. We also have to be a little careful with ozone with trees. So like planting trees next to the freeway because some can produce volatile organic compounds that can increase ozone production. So gum trees, for example, very bad. Most of us can live without a gum tree next to a freeway, so. Too much of an issue. So, um, yeah, they can be, yeah, they can produce volatile, they, they, they combine with sunlight can uh, they can uh, they can encourage ozone production. So, I mean, there's, there, there's some species that do that. But you know, just planting with a little care can normally avoid those things, yeah. Right, so, next I'm gonna talk a little bit, so enough about health. So we've got life and death. Hopefully I managed to convince you a little that trees possibly can be a matter of life and death. Um, you, now let's talk about crime. And uh, this is not crime committed by trees, but rather crime prevented by trees. Um, now you may, it may seem that the link between trees and public health is a little tenuous, but the link between trees and crime, it, it may seem to some people absurd. How on earth could there be a link between trees and crime? Um, well, I don't know. Are any of you familiar with, there was a real groundbreaking uh, study done in two thousand and one by Quo and Sullivan? They did it in a, the IDB Wells Public Housing Development, South Side, Chicago. And they, they looked at, there's these various uh, public apartment buildings. And they found that ones with more trees around had lower reported crime. So this is really groundbreaking stuff. Um, but we thought, well, the, like a lot of groundbreaking researches, well, ask as many questions as it answers. Um, this is a very economically deprived area, you know, would it apply in a more typical suburban area? There are also psychologists who did it, and I know one of these people, so I can make fun of them. So, economists have a disdain for the quantitative skills of all other social scientists, which is warranted, frankly. I mean, they, terrible, terrible, psychologists aren't too bad, but anthropologists and sociologists, they can't count past ten unless they take their socks and shoes off. So, um, we said, okay, what happens if we use a bigger sample size, some slightly more sophisticated, uh, statistical techniques? And so, what we did here, we looked two thousand eight hundred and thirteen single-family homes. And you may say, why did I pick two thousand eight hundred and thirteen? And that was, that was when my student mutinied. I, I just kept going and then, two thousand eight hundred, she said, I ain't doing it anymore. So, okay, fair enough. That's, that was a pretty big sample size. And so, I sent it to each one of these houses. And she measured the vegetation, so trees and other vegetation, um, but she also looked at all this stuff around them. So, uh, barriers, for example. I looked, I talked to crime prevention people before this, and I would have thought, like, I have this six-foot wooden fence around my backyard. That's good, right, for a crime point of view? No. Apparently, very bad. Anything that's view obstructing can provide cover for criminals, particularly as I've handily provided a gate that isn't locked to mine. So, you just go, go in and once you're in there, you can do anything you want. What they love to see are those wrought iron fences with, you know, so they're a barrier, but you can see through them. But they said, sometimes even small barriers that don't present much of a physical barrier, they can, psychological barriers in private and public space. So, we, we measured those. We also looked at the condition of houses, um, streetlights, you know, visibility again, whether they had a garage. And then we looked at, you know, things like whether a house has an alarm, stuff like that. So, what do we find? Well, uh, what we found is, this is one of those studies where you initially get results and you're like, why me? Why can I not get just simple results? Why is my life being blighted by this nonsense? Often, those end up being the best ones, once you get over the self-pity of it not being what you wanted. It was pretty straightforward with street trees. So, here we got my magnificent little house here. So, if you've got a street tree, we found it, houses with street trees always had lower crime. It was always associated with lower crime. Great, fantastic. And we found that larger, uh, houses with larger yard trees also associate with lower crime. Fantastic, great. Little trees, smaller trees, the breaking point, by the way, is forty-two feet. And we will get to why forty-two feet in a second, because that was, again, perplexing me. Houses with, uh, smaller trees were associated with higher crime. So, what's that about? Well, it may be easier to see, how could, uh, how could trees increase crime? That's perhaps a little easy to see, right? They can be view obstructing. Look at this one. Obstructs views, it stops people seeing out, it can provide cover for criminals. For those of you may be familiar with the Principles of Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design, they, I think if you talk to the, those type of people, they would all have us living on a ten-acre concrete pad with, you know, a thousand watt lights on top of us, and then we'd all be safe, apparently. Uh, but yeah, anything that obstructs views, indeed, let's see this, we found this, in fact, this is consistent. We found that houses with view obstructing, uh, barriers, like this one, like my, this looks precisely like my backyard, had higher crime. We found ones that had streetlights had lower crime. So, again, we see visibility is an issue. So, the fact that, that little trees can obscure views makes sense. It's consistent with other results. But how on earth, uh, could trees, but also, well, why forty-two feet? What's that? What's bizarre thing? Well, so I sent my post student who'd mutinied, I begged and controlled her, said, please go out and measure a hundred trees and measure the crown height. So, that is, you measure the height of the tree, but how high up the tree does the crown stand? And so, for a forty-two-feet tree, that was about nine feet. Okay? And what I then really, really begged and said, can you go measure the top of a hundred first-floor windows? And that came out as nine feet as well, almost exactly the same. So, what I think is that when you get taller trees, because it's the crown of the tree that blocks the view. So, when you get taller trees, they get high enough up that they don't actually obscure views in quite the same way. Okay, so that's why small trees might increase. Well, how on earth could big trees reduce crime, though? How is, how is that plausible? Well, the Quo and Sullivan, what they thought was happening was that it would bring, trees would bring people out into public spaces. And I think in a, in a public housing development, that makes sense because you have this sort of communal space, you make it more attractive. What happens when you bring more people out? Then if you have a criminal, more likely to get seen. Uh, you know, what they talk about in criminology, the idea of effective guardians. They decided that you would see people and that, uh, so that's, that's a deterrent. Uh, but also, some of you may be familiar with the broken windows theory of crime hypothesis. It's a little bit controversial, but this idea that, uh, signs of decay, so if a house, if you have seen a neighborhood's graffiti, or if it has broken windows or garbage, that you're more likely to have crime. It sends a subliminal signal to a potential criminal that this is not well-cared-for, that if they were to commit a crime, they'd be more likely to get caught. Okay, well, I think as a tree is the opposite. It's the opposite of a broken window. This is a subliminal signal to say, neighborhood is cared for, that if they were to commit a crime, they would get caught. Now, let's be clear, this is subliminal. I'm not suggesting that, you know, uh, you have a criminal going along the street and they're about to break into a house and go, ooh, big leaf maple, you know, and then run away. That's not, I, well, it might happen, I don't know. But I, I don't think that's what's gonna happen. Um, maybe, but I, I really, yes, I don't think that's the case. Um, so, this is obvious implication, say, trees, yeah, can be used for sort of neighborhood rejuvenation and for, for crime reduction, but just be careful, don't plant trees where they obstruct views. And if you have view obstruction trees, then you can prune them up to avoid view obstruction. It seems fairly straightforward to avoid that. So, now I've got to a point now where I, I could, I have a couple of studies left I can talk about if you like. Um, uh, they're about, uh, like summertime cooling costs and stormwater runoff. Um, if I can tell, talk about those, or I can give you a break, whatever you would like.
I'd like to hear about both of those. Those are both really relevant to us.
Then I will make, I will go through it and, I'll do, I'll be, these will be fairly brief. But, um, okay. So, when I did this, I did the summertime cooling costs one several years ago, and I actually did it in Sacramento because I didn't think it was hot enough in Portland. Should have just waited on that one, shouldn't I? But, well, even then, it's not, it wouldn't have worked quite as well here because not so many people have air conditioners. I was interested in the electricity use. Because what we did is we actually got access to electricity billing data. So, we had, uh, this is great because there's a guy there who, oh, you'll appreciate this, you're a politician, so... Um, the guy who runs, there's a Sacramento Tree Foundation, also at the time was a city councillor uh, in Sacramento. And I tried to get utility billing data in Portland, and people squawked and squealed, oh, can't get that, it's private. I called this guy and it got sent six hours later. And I was like, yeah, fantastic, that's great. So, I did it there. So, um, we looked at four hundred and sixty-six houses in the woodland park neighborhood of Sacramento, if anybody's familiar with that. And we had the electricity billing data. And then what we did, um, ignore those colors for the time being, but there's a little house from the top. And what we did is just, again, my post, this was a different post student. It was good at the time, the economy was bad, so students wouldn't quit when you gave them crap work. Um, is we measured the canopy cover in twenty, forty, and sixty-foot buffers around the north, south, east, west side of the house. So, we measured them all. And then we, we say, okay, well, you know, what's the impact on electricity use? What we found is areas there in green, if there was a tree there, that was associated with lower summertime cooling costs. So, within sixty feet of the west side of the house, or within forty feet of the south side of the house. And then weirdly, and we'll get to this, if a tree was in twenty feet of a north side of the house, it had higher summertime cooling costs. Yeah, well, that was kind of my thought as well. Again, why do I get these results inflicted upon me? I think I can explain them. Now, I want you to be impressed with the next figure. I love this one, nobody else seems to think it's great, but if you could at least fake some enthusiasm, I would certainly appreciate it. This, what this figure shows you is, it's the, it's the length and direction of a shadow cast by a thirty-foot tree on the fifteenth of July in Sacramento, and also the temperature of day. So, you can see the shadow moving around. You're still a little impressed? Yeah, thank you, thank you. I'm sorry, I, I don't mind in sincerity, but, you know...
No, it's completely sincere.
Thank you, I appreciate it. So, what you see is that in the early morning, it's the tree, uh, to the east side of the house is gonna shade it. But that's the coolest time of the day, so you're gonna have a lower summertime cooling cost. As the day heats up, swings to the north, so it'll be a tree to the south. So, you see, that's why you're getting a, you are seeing an impact from trees to the south, although only up to forty feet. Then you get to the hottest time of the day, it's gonna be a tree to the west that's gonna have the shadows, and they're gonna be the longest ones. Um, and actually, if I did this study again, I would have measured further out. I think it probably would see further than sixty feet, but, you know, you go back, you don't work these things out. Now, the interesting thing is you can see a tree, a tree to the north isn't gonna cast any shade, is it? But what I think is happening is when you get a tree really close to a house, it essentially acts like a thermal blanket. It may slow the radiant cooling of a house at night. And we did some modeling work that suggests that. But, uh, you know, it's just something in the way, right, you know, for the radiant cooling. Um, now, that effect is cancelled out, or more than cancelled out by the shade effect if it's on the east, south, or west, or south, or anywhere but the north side. So, but on the north side, you don't get any shade effect. So, I think that's what it was. You don't wanna have those north-side trees too close uh, because they can keep the house a little warmer at night, and you don't get any shade effect. Now, anything that impacts electricity use is gonna impact carbon. Right? Now, most people, we think about carbon sequestration, about how trees grow and sequester carbon. They certainly do that. But that's always gonna be, to some degree, temporary. You know, the tree's gonna die, even if you take it and make it into a table, you know, sooner or later, that carbon is returned to the atmosphere. But what we found is that that was, there, there was also a permanent offset. That is, if every time, if you use one less kilowatt of electricity, that's coal or gas that's not being used, and that's a permanent offset. We found that in this case, it was about equal. So, the sequestering benefits were about equal to the offset. So, another way of looking at that is you could, if you took a tree out from the woods, plopped it down on the south or west side of a house in a city, you'd double the carbon benefit. And so, you know, it's, it's...
Wait, you doubled what?
The carbon benefits, the carbon. And indeed, more so because it's permanent offset. And really, that's what matters. We're not gonna sequester our way out of global warming. You know, that we really need to be stopping, reducing the emissions rather than sequestering them once they're actually out there. I mean, it's just the scale of the issue. Now, one of the interesting things is also cost. I, in virtually anywhere in the country, everybody, we, residential, we pay a flat rate for, we don't have time-of-day pricing. So, you know, in this study, I think you see along the horizontal line, this is the, the horizontal dotted line is the, is the residential price that people pay, about eleven cents a kilowatt hour. It is. And along the, along the bottom, there's a time-of-day, this is a twenty-four-hour period. And you, you go along and it doesn't matter. But the wholesale price, what it costs to generate electricity varies massively by time of day. Um, you know, in the middle of the night, it gets down to about four cents a kilowatt hour. The peak times is twenty-eight cents a kilowatt hour. So, in fact, the, the, the utility there is losing money in peak hours. In fact, they give away free shade trees because they desperately wanna flatten that peak demand. And they don't wanna lose, they don't want you to be using electricity at seven o'clock because they're losing money. Uh, so, now in California, there's a legislative mandate, it's not funded yet, to go to time-of-day pricing. And as we know, eventually, as California goes, so goes the rest of the country. So, if we do go to time-of-day pricing, what you'll see there is that that tree, you know, that, suddenly that tree on the west side of the house is gonna be worth double or triple because they won't, that kilowatt hour rather than costing eleven cents is gonna cost thirty cents. So, that, that's when we would do that, but, um, there's that, so...
Is that why they're considering time-of-day pricing?
Uh, I think just, they're not, it's just because they think it will make for more efficient use of electricity. So, people, you know, things like run their dishwasher at three in the morning, you know, just, again, trying to flatten that peak demand. Because, you know, you're having to use, there's power plants that are online five hours a month, you know, to meet the peak demand. So, they just, generally, speaking as an economist, when you get people responding to the correct price, so they start to do things like, like that, or...
Sure.
That's, 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 I think, the main reason. Industrial users already have time-of-day pricing. Um, so, but again, the case here, uh, if you go back to here, you're seeing the trees sixty feet from the west side of a house shading it. I know if you went sixty feet on the west side of my house, you're in my neighbor's yard. You know? So, again, not to belabor the point, you get the spillover effect. My neighbor could be paying for the tree, I'm benefiting, so whether the market ain't gonna do very well. But what, so we need is some sort of, you know, you guys doing something to, to fix that. So, that's, that's electricity. And then I'm just gonna briefly talk about stormwater, which was here, which was not done in Sacramento. That was done, yeah, having just been to the San Joaquin Valley, you'd have to wait a long time to do a stormwater study down here. I did this one in, in Portland. And what they have is, I decided, there's been several studies that I've looked at, like small, you know, experiments with trees, you know, putting buckets into trees. But I decided I wanna look at actual sewer runoff. And there's flow monitors, there's about thirty-four flow monitors in the combined sewer system in Portland. So, you familiar with what a combined sewer system is? So, you know, that, where the, where the stormwater and the sanitary floor go in one pipe. It was considered, before we treated sewage, why not? It's all going in the river anyway. Of course, now that's a bit of a problem because now we do treat it, stormwater is super variable. So, you get more likely for it to overflow. I know about seventy percent of Portland is, uh, on a combined sewer system. I don't know what Milwaukee's like. Do you have, do you have a CSO here, or...
A little bit, but we're, we're, we're reducing it pretty rapidly.
You're separating out systems?
There were a few original, but much less now.
Yeah. So, they have, I mean, that was what the big pipe was about in Portland, you know, that, that was, the sewer, because of that, they were dumping it fifty times a year, it used to be, now it's out once or twice. Um, of course, it doesn't fix the problem on the upside. That is, you can still get back up into basement. And, you know, I don't know, I have had sewage in my basement. No need.
Disgusting.
It is disgusting. It is, it is. It's also, you realize why plumbers are rich. If you recall, somebody at three in the morning, because he had sewage in his basement, you are not very price-sensitive.
No.
Yeah, yeah. What do you want? Do you do the house? Fine. If you come out in the next half hour, that's just fine. So, what we did, so there's, there's, there's these flow monitors. So, what you have here, this, this little thing, what we did is we created sewer sheds. What do I mean by that? If you look at the little yellow cross there, that is where there is a sewer mon, flow monitor. It's actually in the pipe underground. So, what we used it to is, what we did is we traced back up and tried to work out what area of land, if rain would drain to that sewer monitor. So, the red line, basically, any rain that falls within that red boundary is gonna end up in the blue sewer pipes eventually, and then it's gonna flow past that pipe. So, this is a sewer shed. That's what we would call it, just because you gotta call it something. It's, it's, it just, that one happens to be down in southwest Portland. There's the red one. Um, oh, sorry. Oh, that went horribly wrong, didn't it? Um, oh, well. Never mind, I've gone all the way through. Let's see if we can get back there. Seal the cartoons in quickly. Where, yes, where are we? Sew, uh, okay, so we have the sewer shed there. And so, the dark green, again, is trees. Fortunately, we can't tell the difference between deciduous and evergreen. And the light green is grass and shrubs. Now, what you could happen here is vegetation could do a number of things that would be helpful. It can stop water getting into the system, reduce total flow. That's obviously a good thing. Less likely to get overflow, it's gonna be less costly to treat when you get to the plant. That's a good thing. But even if it doesn't do that, you can also just slow runoff. So, you can take a particular amount and flatten it out. And much the same as talking about peak demand for electricity, peak flow is bad. You don't wanna max out the pipes. You max out the pipes, the bad things happen. So, even if you can slow it down, spread it out over a longer period of time, that can be a good thing. So, what we found is, um, in the summertime, we found that trees were, there, there were some, but basically, they were associated with lower runoff. So, total runoff. So, the more trees that were in sewer shed, after taking into account all the stuff, you got lower, lower amount, total amount you get there. Ground cover, like grass and shrubs, what that was associated with slower runoff. So, and that was a stronger relationship. That was more robust. Uh, so things like, you know, like bioswales and things like that, they appear to, and then that makes sense because they're actually on the ground, right? So, that, that could actually slow runoff. So, that's what we saw. We didn't see a relationship in the wintertime, um, doesn't mean there wasn't one, we just, we, we couldn't detect that.[1758.39] So, uh, the, the strongest relationship there was with ground cover. We were seeing some impact on slowing the runoff. So, it, it also depends on the place. And if you have a, if you have a, you know, really big pipe, yeah, it doesn't really matter, you know, so. But if you have a, a place where you have a, a functional pipe, but it's undersized because of new development, then that might be a place where green infrastructure could be used to avoid having to get the backos out and spend on expensive gray infrastructure. But I would be caution against it as a sort of panacea. It really is specific to a particular situation where that would be appropriate, where the appropriate is a green infrastructure. It's not just, nah, it's always, you know, we can do that and basically not have to worry about gray infrastructure. It can be, I think, a useful complement, but, but used in an appropriate way. So, I think, good lord, I hope I'm done. I am! Thank goodness. I am done. So that is all I have for you. That's a pretty good summary of most of the research I'm doing, Light. I thank you very much for your interest, and if you have any other questions, I will be more than happy to answer them, or at least try to. Lot of information.
Yeah. Thanks for all your work. That's incredible work.
Thanks. Thanks.
I had a question that was similar. I was thinking about different things that might affect the moss. What about rain? Because you're gonna get acid and other things coming down, what effect, I mean, how did you cancel that out or take that variable out?
With that, yeah. Well, that was interesting. And we found, yeah, that it did matter. Uh, weather conditions mattered. Uh, yeah, rain, cuz you'd wash off more of the pHs. Um, also, humidity mattered, um, temperature mattered, so it's controlled for that. The type of tree, if a tree had a thicker crown, you saw more pHs, and we think that's because it would provide more shelter from the rain, so the rain wouldn't wash it off. When we did the heavy metals, which I haven't showed you here, that was a lot less noisy. That seemed a lot less resist, that wasn't affected as readily by the weather as the pHs. But yes, the structure of the tree matters. We had to be careful. We, we never took anything below a meter to avoid, like, dog pee and things like that. But this, yeah, I mean, they, they are noisy. So it's not, doing this is not without, it's not straightforward.
Real world data instead of a controlled experiment.
That's what I was trying to figure out. How do you get rid of that variable? Like, I have no idea.
We measured it, I mean, we, we took weather measurements, we, we measured the trees, we measured their relative orientation to the road, we measured distance from the road. We measured the height of the tree, the species of the tree, you know, we took as many things. Cuz again, what, this was initially, we just didn't know what, what mattered. We didn't know what mattered. But the heavy metal stuff is proving more promising. We may be doing some work in Cincinnati, um, with the children's hospital. They have a, again, it's horrifying how little we know about earthquake. It really is scandalous. They, they, they're doing this, they have this study of, they have seven hundred and fifty, um, kids. And originally, this study was done to, uh, they, half the sample were recruited, they live less than five hundred meters from a freeway. And then the other half were more than fifteen hundred meters. It was originally about asthma allergies. But they, they started in two thousand, and now as the kids hit adolescence, they've, they've, they've transitioned to neurodevelopmental issues. And what they're doing, so they take blood tests of these kids, and they give them brain scans and all this stuff. And they're finding cadmium and mercury in their blood, and they don't know where it's coming from. As a major said, they do not know where it's coming from. And so what we are probably gonna do in the spring is, we're gonna go there, spring or summer, and take, there we'd have to do lichen, we went in May to, and see if we can help them identify where these sources are, because they don't know. And they're seeing an impact on the, you know, they're seeing an impact in the brain scans, you know, kids with high cadmium and mercury are seeing impact in the brain scans, and we don't, they don't know where it's coming from.
And they can't figure out from where the kids live?
They know where they live, but they don't know where the sources are. They know where some of them are, it's, you know where permitted sources are. But what we were finding uh, is that the permitted sources actually, for some of the metals, the permitted sources were pretty good, right, you know. Again, I, I have to be a little careful because DQ are having to inform some of these people, but, you know, you would put a map and you would see, you see these bullseyes, basically, you know, because it's point source emissions, so you'd see like, bullseye, bullseye, bullseye. Sometimes you put on the permitted ones, and they would like to sit in the middle of the bullseyes. Okay, that's fine. Nickel, for example, down in Johnson Creek, PCC structural. They're clearly the biggest nickel emitter. They have a permit for it. Um, so, you know, that's known. Some of the other metals, you put on the permitted sources, they don't explain much of anything. And we were finding that there was unknown sources, and, and, uh, in a couple of months, I could tell you more about that. But just suffice it to say that, you know, there's gonna be regulatory reactions stemming out of that, because they, they, they don't do those. But yeah, but the trees are, again, they're an option. They, I think, that's, trees, you can, it's something you can do, you know, and some of these problems are a little intractable. You know, dealing with health inequalities, dealing with air pollution, dealing with things like this, they're not easy problems to address. And it's, you know, often, I mean, I'm not suggesting that one doesn't pursue the things. I'm coming from a narrow disciplinary background, but to offer you at least some evidence that trees can be a cost-effective way of addressing perhaps some of those things.
And so, on the testing for, of the moss,
Yeah.
is your baseline, I mean, your results, you just tested those two, no, you tested a lot of things, not just the two, the pyrene and the-
We tested sixteen different pHs and nineteen different metals.
And is that information public?
I can, uh, the, the pH stuff I can give you, uh, the metal stuff I can give you in a couple of months, yeah.
So if we did, if we wanted to spot test in Milwaukee, we could compare?
Yeah. And we, we actually came into Milwaukee a little bit, because what we did was, we went, uh, we did, we were in Seaford, and we did a one K buffer around. Just for sampling reasons, basically, there are spatial issues here, and it, you want, you can get ill-defined at the edges, so we went at one K buffer. So actually, I remember being very close to Seahull. Isn't there, there's this, I have a very, isn't there somewhere over here, there's a Nautilus store, just like on the second floor?
A what?
Just Nautilus, right?
Oh, yeah, Nautilus, it's just down the street.
Bank, or something, that was, at least a couple of years ago. We took, I remember taking-
It's now a veterinary clinic.
Is it? Okay, yeah, I remember taking a sample from behind there. Wind was howling, it was hideous, it was cold, but, so yeah, we, we came into Milwaukee a little bit. Um, yeah, so, uh, I could, I could, you know, if you're ever interested, I can show you precisely the maps where we took the point.
So you did sample around precision cast parts?
Yes. And the, the nickel thing comes out like, boof.
Yeah.
It's huge. And also cobalt and chromium.
I'm sure there's more.
Yeah, the big ones that, you know, the, the big four from a public health point of view is arsenic, arsenic, mercury, lead, cadmium. I mean, there's, there are, there are issues associated with nickel and cobalt.
Cadmium part of automobile brakes, that just popped into my brain.
No, no, that is, no, there's another one that, yeah, I know what you mean. It comes from breaking, you can get, no, cadmium, um-
Well, never mind then.
It comes from, uh, it from a number of things. Trash incinerators, cuz it comes from batteries, so batteries getting incinerated, burning natural gas, it's a pigment, um, it's a, called metals of pigments, it's a plastic stabilizer. And also from metal smelting. So Esco produces some cadmium. But, uh, it's, yeah, and arsenic has got quite a lot of industry uses too, but. So there, yes.
Yeah, there.
Interesting.
Question.
Yeah, so you started out your presentation talking about sort of the market-based approach to, um, what's the word I'm looking for?
Benefits of trees?
Yeah, not just the benefits, but not externalizing the costs solely to the single homeowner.
Precisely, yeah.
Have you done any research or come across any case studies? Because, you know, you're talking, you made a couple anecdotal comments while you were up there about us being the politicians who have the most control, but if you're gonna take a market-based approach to this, then it's not the-
What would be the appropriate policy lever? Well, one, you would probably do one of two things. One is to, one is to mitigate the costs in some fashion, you know, so you could, you could approach this in a couple of ways. So if you have that person bearing a hundred percent of the costs, you, you assume some of those costs is one way one could do it, or you provide an, say, a tax credit
Incentive.
for doing, that would be the two obvious policy levers to do that. So, you know, some cities, for example, they simply adopt, again, I have to be very careful. I'm not advocating anything. I'm just saying, these are possible things. So you, you could, for example, say, well, we're gonna cover the costs of planting and maintaining street trees. We see this as a community asset, and we could do that. That would be a, one approach. A less drastic one would be providing, yeah, some sort of credit, or you could provide, uh, I don't know, I know in Portland, for example, one of the issues that people don't like is because of sidewalk repair. So you could say, well, okay, we're not gonna do, you know, if, if a, if a street tree breaks a sidewalk, we're gonna cover that. You know, so again, covering, somehow covering those costs, somehow making this, or providing some sort of tax incentive. I mean, I think there are very small ones in Portland about, you can get ones for, off your sewer bill, but it's like twenty-five bucks or something.
Well, no, they're also, BES is implementing different things like bioswales and trees, and measuring stormwater runoff, and giving people either a tax credit or their, um,
Reduction in their stormwater bills.
It's incentivizing citizens.
Who is?
Portland. BES is.
So some things along those lines would be the, the sort of policy levers you would take, yeah. So, I mean, you're in a, why I was saying that with you guys is cuz you, you, is that you have, um, somebody needs to have, think in, be able to get their arms around the costs and benefits, you know. And so, a, a city, for example, would be one way of doing that, because most of these benefits don't leak out beyond the city boundaries. So for you, there are no externalities. There are no spillovers, you know. For an individual, there are. Uh, but you are, you are in a position to do that. And whether you choose to do that or not is entirely your, your decision. But these are things where you're clearly having a market failure. That's no question. And when you have these market failures, that's, in economics, one of the sort of standard justifications for government action, when you wanna correct a market failure. And you could, you could have, one of the sessions are market-based solutions. Is that?
Yeah, no, that's helpful. Have you seen any kind of cities, um, I don't know, uh, forming any kind of a risk pool where people can pay into it and then not have to be responsible if a tree costs some significant amount of money?
I have not seen that, though. That would be a very interesting thing. Yeah, liability is an issue. Yeah, so there, yeah, if you, if there would be some way of doing that. So that, yeah, if you, if your tree comes down and squashes somebody's car or something, whatever it is, yes. Yeah, I think, I, I did another study about where we looked at why people plant trees. There was, there was Friends of Trees went round, uh, and asked people, were you willing to plant a tree? And they said yes and no, and why. And I looked at why, you know, and then people have various different reasons, and it varies by neighborhood and demography. And, you know, some of the poorer neighborhoods, uh, liability is a big issue. You know, people don't wanna, you know, it's gonna fall on somebody, it's gonna bankrupt, you know, so. Yeah, if you can, anytime when you can mitigate that cost, or, you know, when you're just a big hoo-ha in Poland leaf collection. You know, that's another, anything like that where you can, you can bear some of the cost. Or that you can provide some benefit. That would be the, quite, you know, the, I mean, quite how that would fit in with your other policy goals would be, you know, obviously, something for you. But it sounds like you guys, I mean, have a sense of the type of thing that would work.
Thank you.
And please, if, you know, if I'm easy to contact, I think you have my contact information, my contact information if you have questions. Um, and please feel free to contact me. We're also, um, you know, Forest Service Research, we take this sort of technology transfer path really seriously, so I do appreciate the invitation. But also, if you, if they're, you know, if there are questions come up, if there are ideas for studies, and you think, you know, this is really a, um, a question that we wanna get at here in Milwaukee, can you call, you know, I'm not saying necessarily do it, but it may be something which I could. I'm always interested in good ideas. We try and, we try and, it, it's, urban forestry, and in particular, the, the health stuff is a, is a growth area of research for, for our station.
Yeah, that's fascinating. So do you go back, like, I know, um, you mentioned Seventy Second, actually, and Friends of Trees did a big tree planting there this last year. A friend of mine happened to volunteer for it. But I mean, do you go back, or do you intend to go back and like site-check some places that got planted that you've checked before? And do a comparison ten years out, or?
Yeah, I think now that, now that we're getting things like LiDAR and better quality remote sensing, those opportunities arise where you, because measuring change is tricky. Like, that, that's always problematic. If you say, okay, well, we're gonna say, you know, showing you one point in time, this is essence of trees. You have to be a lot more precise if you have two points and you actually wanna try and infer something about change. But we're getting to the point now where we can about do that, like with the combination, often the combined era photography and LiDAR, yeah, it'd be cool. You can also do it by hand. I mean, I know Friends of Trees go round, could look at mortality, for one thing, they just wanna see if they're alive. And so I've, I've talked to them about using theirs, their, uh, using their, their data. And, and ultimately, you know, although I was being glib about the impracticality of doing a randomized controlled trial, sometimes that's what needs to be done, you know, where you would actually recruit some people and split it in half, you know, and say, right, you join the study, if, if you get selected for the treatment group, we will, you have to be willing to plant at least two trees, and we'll plant them for free and maintain them for three years or something. If you don't, we'll give you five hundred dollar gift certificate at Home Depot, I don't know, you know, and then we will follow the health of those people for ten, twenty years. I mean, it would be fantastic to do something like that. And ultimately, somebody's gonna have to bite the bullet and do, do-
And do that.
Yeah. I wanted to do one in Portland with schools, um, where planting trees at schools is an experiment, right? But, uh, one of the, my profound regrets in life is that there's, I have also, I have almost no power. There's, there's never a downside saying no to me. Which is really depressing. And so I, I was, I had this experiment, and the person who was in terms of landscaping, they didn't like it because trees would mean more mowing. And then I was telling them, well, we need to do random assignment. And they're saying, no, that's not how you do these experiments. You can't have random assignment. I was like, dude, you charge the mowing. I, I'm not gonna tell you I mow the damn lawn, don't tell me I conduct study, and I perhaps was not as diplomatic as I could have been. And so that particular avenue is now closed to me. But it would be fun to do, uh, some sort of random, you know, planting and follow things through time. There was a, actually, uh, somebody at Friends of Trees told me those, I don't know where, but somewhere in, they said in Milwaukee, you might know, there's a trailer park, um, where there's one side of the street, there's trailers of, of quite few trees, and on the other side, there isn't. He, he was right, it was Brian West told me about this. He, it was just an email last week. And he was saying, oh, I wonder if you could tell the difference. And it struck me, I was like, I wonder what'd happen if you planted, you know, kind of had that as a control and planted trees in the other one, you know. Kind of interesting to see what happened.
There's a lot of unincorporated Clackamas County that shows up as Milwaukee on a map, for whatever reason. So there's some that are down along ninety-nine that they may be thinking of.
Ninety-nine, and then out towards, um,
Yeah, out towards Clackamas County, too. But I'm trying to think of trailer parks.
I could, I have the email at my office, I'll let you know. But, yeah, I mean, these would be interesting things to see what happened, is what, what does happen.
That could be the one back there by the bong.
They said it was like one side of the street was, you know, there was like split by, on the other side, I don't know. Anyway. Those are sort of the type of things we're continuing with, and, you know, but the, the health stuff in particular, um, you know, I, I think, you know, the, the impact on people's quality of life and health is, is pretty profound. Um, and, uh, it's, it's fascinating, you know, and I, I, cuz I'm a quantitative guy, if trees are that important, you should better measure, you should better see it a measurable effect. And that's, you know, indeed, what we're finding, so. Yeah, there you are. Anyway.
I'm assuming you've read Jared Diamond's book?
Which one?
The, it's the one about trees. It's, uh, blanking on the name. He studied the societies that had disappeared. Collapse.
No, I haven't. Oh, interesting.
You would love that.
Oh, yeah, but it's kind of heartbreaking.
It's heartbreaking, but it's, it's fascinating. It really ties human life to trees. Just straight across.
Well, they, I mean, there's definitely something fundamental going on, and, you know, I'm, I've just been able to nibble around at the edges of things, and I'm, you know, I'm a pragmatist, I'm having to, uh, let's write it down. What's the, the author?
Jared Diamond.
Jared, is that G, G?
J, isn't it?
J A R E D M O N D, I think. Last child in the woods is also.
Yeah, that's, that I have read. That's an interesting one, yeah. My, my wife gave it to me. She is, what's the, is that, well, there's a few other classics like that one. What's the, have you seen The Last American Man, the one about that? This is an interesting one, as well, similar lines.
I don't know if anybody else has, has read it, but years, years ago, Ursula Le Guin wrote a novella called The Word for World is Forest.
Interesting.
And it's about the Pacific Northwest, and it's, it's pretty amazing.
But that's fiction, right?
Yes.
Yeah, the Jared Diamond book
Is not.
is, is archaeological and anthropological study.
But you see, I mean, if you, what, what I'm trying to do now is quantify stuff, but do you, I mean, do you think if you had John Muir sitting in the room, he'd be surprised by what I'm talking about? No. I mean, you look at things like the Tree of Life metaphor in the Bible, you know, you look at art, the picture, which you may not have, if we get right to the beginning here, I, you really would comment on this, but, uh, um, do you know what, I just, come on. Nearly, 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 that, that- Nearly there, nearly, 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 that, there. Do you know what that is? That's a hammer dryad. So in Greek mythology, dryads were, you know...
All right, the spirit of the tree.
Yeah, the hammer dryads were, were, were tree, they were, they were nymphs, they were a type of nymph. And the hammer dryad in particular, I mean, dryads were tree spirits, but hammer dryads, their fate was so closely entwined with the tree that if the tree was to die, they were to die. You know, so you can see, she's objecting to being cut down there, not quite in as strong a terms as I might, but, though he seems like he's probably given up the, his heart's not really in cutting the tree down anymore. But, you know, the idea of religion, poetry, I sometimes use, there's a great, God, what's the, Seamus Heaney, the Irish poet, wrote an amazing poem about the death of his mother. There's a series of poems, and he used the loss of a chestnut tree as a kid, as a metaphor for that. And I'll read that in presentation sometime. So I think, you know, other traditions, religion, art, literature, these connections people intuitively made, and I'm just trying to come along and do the soulless counting bit, you know.
I think educationally, though, this is a really good thing for us to, you know, it's quantifiable, then we can show people how it affects them, and maybe they'll be more interested in planting trees rather than cutting them down.
One can only hope.
So I think that's important.
Well, it is, and you can make, and you know, that these, as I say, environmental arguments can be very polarizing, they can be very emotive. And if you can say, well, look, you know, they just may be a cost of effective way of achieving something that we want, maybe lower crime or improved health, or whatever that may be, or reduced energy use, or something.
What was the crime percentage?
I can't actually remember the number. I can send you the paper that I can't remember.
It was significant, because of one of the, one of the presentations you gave, you had that there.
Yeah, I have no short-term memory, but, yeah, it was, it definitely, it was non-trivial.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, and that's actually been found, and there's been a couple of other studies recently that have found a similar impact. So, you know, this is, there does appear to be something going on, and when you're getting at, you know, health, or you're getting at subliminal human behavior, criminality, again, it's some, these are fundamental things. You know, these are not, not trivial things. They're both important in themselves, but they're indicative of a, of a important, of a profound, basic relationship, that would be my view. And, you know, but then, you know, you guys are the people who can use the word should, you know, and they should happen or gonna happen. I, you know, I, what I can hopefully say is what I think the consequences of different courses of action may be, but you're the leaders who can actually, you know, make those, make those decisions. I'm glad I don't have your job. There's no offence. I'm glad somebody has that job.
Well, I have one last question.
Yeah, absolutely.
Given that we sort of suffer from a little bit of a shortage of housing in the region too.
Yes.
And I can think of a handful of projects in Clackamas County that are actively being debated right now because they involve cutting down large amounts of trees. Have you found any studies that you've come across that talk about sort of an optimum basal stem density per acre that is a good point for promoting good health?
That is an interesting question, and I know in terms of house prices, I don't know if you know, know on that, a soul who's a professor at Reed, and she's done some work that suggests that there is, for house price, there is a diminishing return at some point. You know, and you can, you know, there's an optimal one. But in terms of promoting of health, it would, that would be difficult. It would depend on the mechanism. Something like air quality, for example, I can't imagine, there would be no upper end, right? Because it's a biophysical process. More trees, pollutant stick to trees, you know, so that would be it. In terms of the impact on stress, or things like inducing exercise, we're just not there. You know, it's early days in terms of this research, and no, no. But you could certainly say what retaining some of those trees would likely to do to the property values, which would, might be something which developers would find a little more compelling. Certainly, it seemed that this is not, this is not the only study that has shown an impact on property values, so.
But I mean, I think your map, your map that showed the forest park and the Lake Oswego, I mean, when you're talking, in particular, one of these properties here that's like seven or eight acres and is just a forest, basically. I mean, it is a dense, dense forested piece, just like Forest Park or whatever, not as big, but, yeah, there has to be an impact, you know. I mean, I think your map, your map's showing that, you know, showing the difference for the forested areas really, you know, makes that case.
And but there's trade-offs, you know, I mean, dense, people talk about the need for dense development, right? You know, we don't wanna do that, we don't wanna spill over into the, you know, growth boundaries. Well, then that creates tensions about, well, how do we have the trees in the green areas, you know? I sometimes see, you know, when we, when we've done various studies, you go into, say, Lad's Edition or Laurelhurst, and you, you see a closed canopy in the middle of the street. Now, new neighbourhood isn't gonna have that, but you're obviously, because it's new, and that's fine. But you, they've got eighteen-inch parking strips. They're never gonna be there. They've said from right, you know, that that communes may, we're never gonna look like that. And, and, again, I'm going into editorializing now, but that seems a little limiting, shortsighted potentially.
What is, what is the basic minimum for, to achieve that sort of canopy?
If you wanna have a closed canopy, Friends of Trees would be good to talk to, but you would be, you know, probably be talking more like four-foot parking strips or something like that, you know, think about. Yeah, and then, you know, something, well, you know, you've seen the ones where you can, they're like this, and you can get like a little Japanese snowbell, it's basically, looks like what a kid would draw for a tree. Hey, and these are trade-offs, you know, and I'm sure developers, they don't wanna give a plan for that, understandably, and that's fine, but...
Well, the other trade-off is, is something that we have talked about here some, is food production, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, the more trees, the less space, less garden, less food production.
Oh, but you see, but I planted three fruit trees.
Yeah, yeah.
Nut fruit and nut trees, and you've got your trade-off is back.
But yeah, but these are not to say, you know, these are not, why I'm saying I don't envy your job is you've got difficult trade-offs to make, you know, I mean, you do, and that these, you know, density development, or, you know, affordable housing, you know, these are all desirable things, and they are not, they can come into conflict with that, and how you manage that is, is something which, I'm glad I spend my day in my office by myself with numbers, and you don't have to do, do these tricky decisions. But hopefully, you know, as I said at the beginning, what I hope is that you're just giving, allowing, give me information. Better informed decisions are always a better thing, right? You may look at this and just carry on exactly as you were, and that's fine, you know. But you may see this and think, oh, okay, maybe there's a, there are opportunities that you hadn't otherwise thought. But you're right, I mean, there are, you have tensions, you know, affordable housing is one, for sure. Anybody else have any questions for me?
Thank you very much.
Not at all, not at all. Cheers, I really appreciate the invitation, it was very kind of you. Thank you. Well, that's, it's always nice to hear, because I do tend to work in isolation a lot, so. Somebody actually cares. That's weird. So that's nice. Thanks for your time.
Yeah, let's take a five-minute break.
Sounds good.
Come back and talk about trees that you've had.